Forward, just because the way they can't.
No, I had a feeling as I hoped.
It's good. Basically.
Right. What the fuck.
Well, they played two bad games.
One to a same.
Last week they played bad. I like that.
Hopefully this is a shop. We're live.
Nanny says they're gonna get a shot.
Just think about none of Urban Meyer's national championships. That's true. Yep. Shock. That's it. They gotta get. There you go. That's why these are called. Active. Yeah, that needs office at church.
Fishkin.
Hello.
Back in the wood we hate, Dean.
That's true.
It's like they're on the 10th.
Yeah, I know. I read. I read. This kind of recently pretty loose here, like. I think they're both two of them.
Yeah, they're number two now, yeah.
Actually.
Yes. I'm serious. I want to take a. Yeah. Severe running back big baby?
Last year was so. Huge. So. I wanted to give. That's that. Yeah. And they.
But now, well. Well, the whole number you want to do this. Who looks bigger?
Oh, that's a good plan to clear.
Yeah, right. Turned into. Wow. You said. It's actually.
Comes from.
Like. Nope. That's your dog. Shut. Can't. So. Okay. Oh, they did so well. Like red does. So. The ball will not save us. Great. Okay. Okay, that shouldn't mean. No, I was. You bet. You've got. Cool. I don't know.
All right, please raise your pledge with the. You'll. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, please call the roll.
Mayor Delacola.
Yeah.
Director Blah Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Kranek.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Treffus.
Here.
Board one, Councilman Biassiata.
Here.
Board two, Councilman Prondor.
Here.
Board three, Councilman Kukrow.
Here.
Board four, Councilman Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties, Lavie.
Yeah.
Building Commissioner Morrow.
Okay, we'll begin with the reading and disposal of the journal.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Prondor.
Having read the council minutes, uh, council meeting dated October 11th, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore, I move that be approved as printed.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
The meeting minutes of October 11th, 2016 have been approved. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Prondor.
Uh, if there is no division of the question, I move that we accept the consent agenda dated October 24, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Consent agenda dated October 24th, 2016 has passed. Are there any resolutions of commendation?
There are none.
Reports of committees. Planning, zoning, and economic development committee last met on October 17th. Those meeting minutes are filed with the clerk, and our next meeting will be on November 21st. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is November 7th.
Thank you, Councilman. Community Services Committee, Councilman Bicker.
Um, our, our next meeting is November 7th. Our last meeting was October 4th, and the meeting, uh, the notes are on file with the clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Police and Safety Committee, Councilman Kranek.
Our next meeting is November 21st. Uh, minutes from the last meeting will be filed with the Secretary of Council.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting will be November 21st.
Thank you. Rules, ordinances, and ethics, Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting is November 7th. The meeting minute, minutes for the September 6th minute, meeting in, uh, October 3rd are on file in the council clerk's office.
Thank you, Councilman. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Prondor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was held October 17th. Our next meeting will be held on November 7th, and minutes are on file with the council clerk.
Thank you. Are there any appointments and confirmations?
No.
Communications, petitions, and claims.
There are none.
Okay, council will now be open to the audience on legislation. If anybody in the audience has anything regarding any issues on, uh, our agenda today, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Do you have anything to discuss tonight? Okay. We'll begin with the second reading of ordinance number 110, 2016.
Ordinance number 110, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilperson Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the District Advisory Council of the Cuyahoga County General Health District for the purpose of providing public health services for the year 2017.
Ordinance number 110, 2016 has been read for its second reading. We will now move on to ordinance number 112, 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I'd like to make an, uh, motion to amend ordinance 112, 2016. Um, in the body, the, the second paragraph in parentheses there where it says twin culverts under Gale Drive, the PID number to be changed from 97103 to 102554.
I'll second that, Mr. President. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Ordinance number 112, 2016 has been amended. Is a, a further motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads amended ordinance 112, 2016 by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker. Yes. Amended ordinance number 112, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for Bridge Inspection Program Services and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 112, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council, uh, passes ordinance 112, 2016.
I will second that, please. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 112, 2016 has been passed. Ordinance number 113, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance 113 dash 2016 by title only. First, first reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker. Yes. Ordinance number 113, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilperson Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to amend, amended ordinance number 111, 2015, passed by council on November 9th, 2015, which appropriated the sum of $4,190,944.41 for the furnishing of all labor and performing all work for the five-year residential refuse collection and disposal, recycling services, and disposal of solid waste, two-day collection, no yard waste, in the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an amended agreement for residential waste collection and recycling services, one-time exchange of carts from 96-gallon to 65-gallon for up to 250 residents on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, with Waste Management of Ohio Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 113, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we pass ordinance 113 dash 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
Just real quick, I just wanna, uh, thank the city for moving forward on this. Uh, number one, residents had reached out to me in the first half of the year looking for the smaller container, and I'm delighted that we're going to have this before the bad weather sets in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Further discussion? Um, if I could ask the service director to explain what the process will be for exchanging carts and also explaining the cost if the, uh, 250 limit is exceeded, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Um, first thing, complaints will come to the service department. Secretary will log the complaints, and we will communicate with, uh, Waste Management to replace the carts during the next, uh, trash collection, regular trash collection cycle. And we'll have further instructions how the residents will leave the old cart out for exchange. And secondly, uh, there's a, a limit of 250 residents where, uh, Waste Management will pay, uh, bear the cost, and after that, there's a nominal fee. I don't remember. I believe it's in the actual contract. There's a nominal fee to purchase a new cart. And, you know, I know we'll work a few kinks out, but it's, it's gonna happen.
And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that money would come out of the, uh, trash levy funds. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance number 113, 2016 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 114, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 114, 2016 by title only for its first and final reading.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker. Yes. Ordinance number 114, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to appropriate an additional sum of $929 for a change order to ordinance number 87, 2016, passed by council on July 11th, 2016, which authorized an initial amount of $11,300 for the 2016 Catch Basin Reconstruction Project, eight locations throughout the city of Seven Hills, for the purpose of replacing two castings at Broadview Road and Mapleview Drive and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 114, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we pass ordinance number 114, 2016.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance number 114, 2016 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 115, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Prondor.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 115, 2016 by title only for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker. Yes. Ordinance number 115, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to amend Chapter 505 Animals and Fowl of Part V, General Offenses Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of repealing existing Section 505.11, Hunting Prohibited, ordinance number 109, 2016, passed by council on October 3rd, 2016, and amending Chapter 505 to add Section 505.11 Hunting Prohibited as contained in Chapter 505 Animals and Fowl of Part V, General Offenses Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of authorizing a nuisance abatement initiative for both short-term and long-term control and reduction of the whitetail deer population in coordination with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and contiguous adjoining political subdivisions that opt to adopt a similar plan for nuisance abatement and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 115, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Prondor.
I move that we pass ordinance number 115, 2016.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance number 115, 2016 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 116, 2016. Mr. President. Councilman Kukrow. I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 116, 2016 by title only for its final reading and declaring an emergency.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 116, 2016, introduced by Councilperson Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with J.D. Striping and Services Incorporated, appropriating an amount not to exceed $33,113.11 for the 2016 Pavement Markings Program and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 116, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we pass ordinance number 116, 2016.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance number 116, 2016 has passed. Ordinance number 117, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 117 dash 2016 by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker. Yes. Ordinance number 117, 2016, introduced by Councilperson Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Specialized Construction Incorporated, appropriating an amount not to exceed $45,000 for the 2016 Street Crack Ceiling Program and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 117, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we pass ordinance 117 dash 2016.
I'll second that, Mr. President. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Ordinance number 117, 2016 has passed. Moving on to Resolution Number 60, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read Resolution 60 dash 2016 by title only for its first reading.
First and final.
And final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker. Yes. Resolution number 60, 2016, Mr. Mayor Delacola and Councilman Treffus, Prondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. A resolution approving and accepting a temporary utility easement granted to the city of Seven Hills, Ohio by Joanne B. Damison, trustee for the installation, construction, and maintenance of utilities, together with all appurtenances, appropriating the sum not to exceed $330 for the acquisition of said easement, declaring an emergency.
Resolution number 60, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we pass Resolution 60 dash 2016.
Uh, point of order, uh, Councilman, I know you're new, but you have to adopt resolutions, not pass.
I move that we adopt Resolution 60 dash 2016, my apology.
No problem. I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes. Resolution number 60, 2016 has been adopted. Resolution number 61, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow. I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read Resolution number 61, 2016 by title only for its first and final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Prondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution number 61, 2016, by title only for its first and final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number 61, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Treffus, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, a resolution approving and accepting temporary utility easements granted to the city of Seven Hills, Ohio by Ronald R. and Patricia Hartwig, Ivan Z. Borden and Scott N. Lupien, for the installation, construction, and maintenance of utilities, together with all appurtenances, appropriating the sum not to exceed $2,420 for the acquisition of said easements, and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number 61, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we adopt resolution number 61, 2016.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number 62, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Treffus, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, a resolution approving and accepting